I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 26, 2018, at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Smith from the Martin Hermann Missionary Baptist Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the presentation of the colors by Tarpon Springs during Honor Guard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is bound prayer. Lord, as we come to you tonight, we give thanks for all your wonderful blessings. We thank you for this great city of Tarpon Springs, Florida. We thank you for the leaders, the mayor and commissioners that you have placed here. We pray that you will continue to bless them as they make decisions that are in the best interest of the residents and its visitors. We pray tonight for all the city workers, the staffers, and we ask a special blessing upon our fire and police department as they keep us safe each day and night. We thank you for this gathering tonight and pray your blessings upon this meeting. In your great name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Enter the republic which is theirs. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I'd like to announce that item number 12, the ordinance 2018-13, which is the application 18-37, has been deferred to August 7, 2018, regularization. And now we're going to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes. Do we have any public comments? I hear none. Commissioner Kikta will read the first proclamation on Honor Guard's Day.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas Honor Guards across the United States serve with honor, dignity, and loyalty; and whereas they demonstrate high regard for the traditions of United States military, public safety organizations, and other agencies, and honor the veterans who serve our country; and whereas the Honor Guard is comprised of courageous men and women who have selflessly served in our military, law enforcement, fire service, public safety, and emergency medical service; and whereas all those who wear the uniform of the Honor Guard understand the sacrifice and are an important part of our community; and whereas the Honor Guard serves our community through participation in services for the fallen, presenting the colors with honor and involvement in community memorials; and whereas this is an opportunity for the city of Tarpon Springs to recognize the services and sacrifice and show appreciation to our Honor Guard. Now therefore, I, Susan Kikta, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim July 1, 2018, as Honor Guards' Day. And I'm not sure. I have some plaques to present. And I may say that we've had a police Honor Guard for some time, but now the fire department has formed their own Honor Guard as well, and today they're here together. So we're very, very thankful for you. And this is... Want to thank you for everything. Do you guys want to say a few words? Andy, you want to say anything? It's nice to see the fire department and the police department together.
Yeah, so this is a long time coming. I approached the chief about two years ago to try and get an Honor Guard for the fire department. So, long time coming. A lot of work, dedication. We have seven members, and we couldn't have done it without the blessing of the fire chief, obviously, and your help, and citizens. Tom Dobie's was a big part of that, donating the money for our Honor Guard uniforms. So, wanted to thank him, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just joking. I'm gonna have to say something. Thank you very much. Members of the Honor Guard are often called at the last moment. I know Memorial Day, Veterans Day, all those days come on the same day every year. Now we have this day to be thankful for as well. But typically, unfortunately, a lot of the things we do are very unpleasant, such as funerals, whether we're here locally or across the state. So, they never happen at a good time. So these gentlemen and ladies that are involved are typically called away and usually spend most of the day traveling across the state to attend the fallen firefighters and police officers throughout the state of Florida and sometimes throughout the country. But we're happy to have the fire department stand up a team. We're proud to help them, and we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are very pleased and very honored and proud to have the police department color guard as well as the fire department color guard. And color guard plays a pivotal role in honoring tradition and paying respect to the serving now and in the past, now and for the future in the armed forces. And I want to thank you for everything you do. You made us proud and honored. Thank you so much. Any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here, now. Thank you very much. Thank you. Item number 20, Agenda, is a proclamation Independence Day. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas on the 4th of July, we celebrate the anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and we gather and wave flags in parades not only to recall the history we shared, but also to honor the vibrant and enduring spirit of America. And whereas this day serves as a reminder of the bravery of those who have made America what it is today, it also renews in us the solemn duty we share to ensure our nation lives up to its promise. And whereas, on our nation's birthday, we may come together in the spirit of America. And whereas, the seat of Tarpon Springs wishes to all of you the best. Happy 4th of July. May God bless all those who serve, and may God bless the United States of America. Now therefore, Chris Alhuzis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim July 4, 2018, as the American Independence Day. Mr. Bard, would you please come forward? From the American Legion to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. You want to say a few words? I have... Yes. How are you? I'm Ed Bard, commander of the American Legion. The fellows that I just brought up to you is all battled, commissioned, members of the American Legion. One is Bill Alitis, who was at the Korean War, well decorated. The other, on the other side here, I have Charlie Panellus, SEAL Team, United States Navy, also a combat veteran. And of course, Gordon, United States Navy, combat veteran, well decorated. And of course, me, I'm just the commander. I was impressed with the Honor Guard. I've got to take and give a salute to the chief, and also the major, and also I see the fire chief was here to him. That's a great thing to see them come out and be at all these ceremonies. And I want to thank the mayor, who's done a lot for us, getting this American Legion post back on track, and also the board. So that's all I have to say, but thank you very, very much. Keep giving the support. The veterans could use it. Thank you, chief. Thank you all.
Thank you. I also liked our celebrations that we have on the 4th of July, Wednesday, which is the 4th of July, we have the picnic. And that starts at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Craig Park. And I want to thank the Waze Manager for sponsoring this event. And we also have the fireworks, and that starts at 8:30 PM at Craig Howard Park. I hope to see everybody there. Any commission comments? Any public comments on this item? Here, now. Thank you. We are now going to the concern agenda. Item number three is 20 feet, Trask Dine Alt, invoice 56201. B is Johnson and Jackson, invoice 2212, specialty events, Hippie Fest, August 11, 2011. Number five is authorized execution of amendment number one, the cooperative agreement between Pinellas County and Tarpon Springs for the development of the water quality monitoring program in the spring bay of the Anclaw River. Number six is the profile number 180018, CCM, single source purchase of VAC Khan, original equipment, manufacturer, parts and services. Number seven is the award file number 180137, CJJ, online marketplace for the purchase of products and services throughout the U.S. Community Purchasing Alliance contract, which is 17006. Any items that you'd like to pull for discussion?
I have a question on 4A.
Sure. Which one?
4A.
4A?
Hippie Fest.
Any other items that you should pull?
I just wanted to talk about seven. Got a quick question.
Okay. Commissioner Seber, you want to...
Yeah. Carol or Reggie? I see that this time you've changed it a little bit, where Hope Street will be closed up to Hellas Parking Lot, and there's typically a boat that comes in at 4 with that situation where the parking needs to, the people park there need to get out, and we've usually used Hope to get them out from that parking lot. So I was just curious what the plans are for that.
Yeah.
We've just never done that, so I was like, okay, where are these people gonna exit?
Hi, I'm Carol Rodriguez. I live at 521 West Winds Drive, Palm Harbor, with the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association. Last year, Lewis, Pulis, we go out the one side of his parking lot, and then they go through the alleyway.
Oh, so they're gonna go up into his parking lot and...
Yes.
So nothing is planned in there?
We did that last year.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I was just, you know, in the back of my mind was remembering how we used to exit them and just wanted to be sure this time. Well, thank you. It's always a great event. Thank you, guys, for what you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
I said... Yeah, thank you, mayor. I had a quick question, Mark. I'm not sure if you could help out with this one. It's $200,000 for up until January of 2022 through Amazon. I just want to know how this would be used. Is it still through normal purchasing procedures, or is it just an opportunity to get better pricing on certain products through the Amazon business side?
It's through the normal purchasing procedures and the pricing, the tremendous savings we're seeing on some things we can get.
Okay.
It's both.
All right. That works. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Are there any public comments on this item? I want to entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number eight, which is the Resolution 2018-12, Application 1834, Clement Ford Site Plan Approval. This is quasi-traditional.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
City Attorney will read the title and will explain the quasi-traditional process. Vice Mayor has something to say.
I need to recuse myself from this item. I have a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
This is a quad judicial proceeding when the Board of Commission acts in a quad judicial rather than a legislative capacity. The quad judicial hearing, the commission is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented in the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, or to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission is to consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. There's established procedure, which we follow at the quad judicial hearing, including all witnesses must give a testimony under oath and shall be sworn in. The city staff will present its testimony, evidence first, and the applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony, witnesses, and the city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony, and members in support will also be given an opportunity to present testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, afterwards the city staff will give an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Thank you.
You want to read it first?
Resolution number 2018-12, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 18-34, requesting site plan approval for Carl Flammer Ford to construct 3,624 square feet of vehicle sales, vehicle parts sales, and vehicle service minor in two buildings, along with 91,609 square feet of vehicle parking area located on the southeast corner of the U.S. Highway 19 North and Spruce Street in the IR Industrial Restricted Zoning District, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Heather Earler, you're planning and zoning director and staff for this application. Again, this is a site plan approval application for the existing parking area at Flammer Ford for their truck and their fleet service. They're looking to finally establish their large sales area and their floor for vehicle repairs on that property. So essentially, what you see out there now, which is a large parking lot, is going to remain with buildings put on top of the existing parking lot. With that, this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the industrial limited land use, and the industrial restricted zoning district, and meets the review criteria of the Site Plan Review, Section 210.03. Their level of service analysis that was conducted on the property, it meets all of the criteria for certificate of concurrency. It's met the technical review committee's review criteria and meets the standards of the Land Development Code. It was last heard by the technical review team on April 26, 2018. Staff is recommending approval.
Heather, I'm sorry. Can I just swear you in real quick?
Sure. Sorry.
Do you swear from the testimony you have given and will give tonight? Is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I sure do.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
With that, staff has the following recommendation, the recommendation of approval with the following condition. Developer, following conditions, sorry. Developer is responsible for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code and for acquiring all jurisdictional permits for approvals, including but not limited to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection permits for wastewater. The developer is responsible for installing the sidewalk along the south side of Spruce Street and for connecting the sidewalk network to the U.S. Highway, to U.S. Highway North, U.S. Highway 19 North. The connection location approved by the Florida Department of Transportation shall be included on the final plans submitted for building permit. Any lighting to be installed on the site, it shall be shielded and directed internal to the site. The applicant shall ensure that the existing stormwater pond system can contain the peak flow volume of storm water as originally permitted by and ensure that the pond's top bank is built to a consistent elevation of 12.6 feet, NAV 88, along its entirety. As a condition of the building permit and prior to receiving the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide as-built survey data that demonstrates the satisfaction of the city, that the condition has been met, and engineer's letter attesting to the structural integrity of the survey structure shall also be provided. The applicant shall meet the requirements of Article XV11, Public Art Program, specifically Section 296, Public Design, or Art Design Standards of the Development and Redevelopment, for a development or redevelopment, the applicant is advised that if Option 2.96B1 is chosen, coordination with the Public Art Committee shall be, should begin as early as possible in order to avoid any unnecessary delays in the issuance of the building permit. Construction plans shall be consistent with the approved site plan, and the payment of all requisite fees attendant to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. The site plan shall expire at one year from the effective date unless an application has been filed for building permit with construction plan signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed in the state of Florida. And with this, the Planning and Zoning Board actually heard this application on June 18, 2018, and voted unanimously to approve the application. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I had two questions, and one you already answered about the ponds, that going to accommodate the needs of the project, and you said it will. The other question I have is the lights, it's near the highway, and we'll make sure that the lights will not be directed to the highway.
Yeah, the lighting will be shielded. That's what the condition that we put in here is that the light is shielded, and they'll actually have to provide us a detail of that light, that shielded light, directed internal to the site.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I know when we approved that townhouse development, the housing development back in there off of...
Jasmine.
Jasmine. Okay, so then there's where Carl Flammer is. Now I know that we had talked about a street going through. Is that street gonna go through?
Currently, Spruce Street is under construction for the extension of Spruce Street down through that area, and that this project is actually being coordinated with that project. So the sidewalks and that type of thing that you saw conditioned in here are a result of that project to ensure that the sidewalks are coordinated with that project.
So then that will be another outlet.
Correct. That street will go through to the light.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Seber?
I was just happy to see, talking about sidewalks, I was happy to see that they're gonna be responsible for doing that because it will connect to that development. So, thanks for thinking.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, mayor. I've got a question about the crosswalks. I saw there's two of them proposed, at least, going across Spruce. Is this something that the police department has looked at, or the city manager, or are we approving these crosswalks?
The police have looked at it as part of the technical review team. One of their officers sits on our technical review team, and one of those will be a signalized flashing. And really why that is is because you have a car dealership on either side, and you will have people going between the, between four, because they will have some of their overflow stock of their cars on that property, at least in the short term.
Okay, so would they be responsible then for maintaining the crosswalks moving forward? Is that like a responsibility of the city, making sure they're painted and, I don't know how that falls in play?
Well, essentially what would happen is they would be responsible for the installation, and then ongoing maintenance will probably be picked up by the city with the exception of the light, with the lights, unless we design a non-disclosure agreement.
Great. Thanks.
No problem.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here, now? Will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Banther? Nope, Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes. Item number nine is the ordinance 2018-07, Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use, Cost Element, and this is the second reading. Staff report, please. Excuse me a second. The City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2018-07, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by revising Section 3, existing land use data requirements, removing proposed subparagraph and maintaining existing subparagraphs, and six relocating subparagraphs from Section 6, revising the goals, objectives, and policies by clarifying policies 1.1.2 and 1.1.10, adding a new goal to providing a rationale for the future land use map and moving the future land use categories from Section 6 to Goal 2, deleting proposed policies 2.1.1, 2.1.2, and 2.1.3, revising Goal 3 to incorporate density and intensity standards in the coastal high-hazard area to be consistent with countywide rules, renumbering all subsequent goals, objectives, and policies, striking redundant sections, and renumbering the subsequent sections to remove or correct outdated references, amending the coastal planning and conservation element by revising Policy 1.6.6 to modify the reference to the future land use element for preservation and conservation of environmentally sensitive areas, and retaining Policy 1.6.7, providing for correction of scriven disairs, providing for other modifications that may arise from a view of this ordinance, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Now we go to the staff report.
And, sorry, mayor, this ordinance, 2018-07, was published in the Tempe Times on March 2 and June 1, and additionally on June 16, 2018.
Okay, Heather Earler again, staff for this application. Essentially, since last reading, based on the consensus that we received from the board and the common and testimony that was presented here, we've made the changes that we outlined last time. I can go through those changes if you wish, but those changes are highlighted in yellow in your backup, which has also been provided to those that had some issues with the original language since the subsequent reading. With that, I can answer any questions that you have. If you want to go through specific language, I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you. Are there any commission comment, question? Now, are there any public comments on this item? Go ahead. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
Pat Lorwick, 2604 Oak Circle, Tarpon Springs. You all read so fast. I don't know whether you changed some of the things that I opposed to, or you didn't. Sounds like the things that I continued to oppose since this last reading and your revisions of that, which I was really pleased with, are still there. So my preference is, even though I've written a letter to all of you expressing my concerns, I did want to make it part of the public record and read what I wrote to you, if that's okay? Yep. All right. At the June 12 Board of Commissioners meeting, I intended to speak to you concerning six pieces of the comprehensive plan revisions and amendments, which were before you that evening, and struck me as changes that needed a careful second or third look by you as a group before you reached a decision about those changes. Because some of my concerns were addressed through further revisions, which were announced at the meeting, I thought it best to save my comments until a revised hard copy was available, and I could see specifically which concerns remained. Planning and zoning has quickly provided a copy, and I really appreciate that. I respectfully request that you look once again at the following changes in that document. Concern number one is Section Roman numeral five, Future Land Use, Policy 1110. Here we have language retained in a sentence amendment that is subject... Here we have language retained in a sentence amendment that is subjective and should have been eliminated for our protection. And the quote is, "Where appropriate, require, excuse me, development proposals to evaluate and preserve sensitive areas as identified in Figure 19, etc." Because I know the city is serious about protecting our wetlands and coastal areas, this sentence should read, quote, "require development proposals to preserve sensitive areas as identified in Figure 19, etc." This isn't in the packet of changes, it was just sort of, I want to be sure it's still there, I assume it will be. It's page 29 of the plan that's currently being revised. I just want to be sure that Policy 112 through Policy 119, and Policy 111, of which Policy 1110 is a part and referred to above, still exist. My second concern is in Section 5, Roman numeral 5, Future Land Use Goals, Objectives, and Policies to Relocate Subparagraphs A through H, Objective 2.8. All that remains of 2.8 are the words urban infill, and the introductory words, environmental protection, are gone from the proposed new objective. Environmental protection should be put back into the new wording of that objective. My third concern, Section 5, Roman numeral 5 that is, again, future land use goals, objectives, and policies to relocate, Subparagraph N, and under that, letter C, it's been added, "The proposed amendment will result in the utilization of existing disturbed areas as opposed to natural areas that buffer existing development from coastal storms or that provide coastal storm floodplain capacity for existing development," unquote. I understand the good intention of this addition. A dilapidated, nonhistoric building is surrounded by concrete. It's probably a good idea to tear that building down and put up a new one in its place. And Heather just made reference to the thing that you just voted on where there was already macadam, so they were just adding buildings to something that was already covered, and that's what I, I mean, I think that's, that's good, that's good policy.
Thank you, your time has expired.
I have two more minutes that were given to me by-
Identify the people, give you two minutes for each person.
Yes, Judith Penelope.
Identify the person, please.
Judith Penelope.
Okay, who's the other person?
She can give me two minutes, I think that's all I'll need.
It'll be two minutes, okay.
I think that's all I need.
Sure, thank you.
I, so, I do understand the good intention of that addition, but how does one define a broad term like existing disturbed areas? A driveway is leading from the road into a wetland. Is that wetland now going to be considered an existing disturbed area? A man-made canal abuts a wetland. Is that wetland now deemed an existing disturbed area? With these possible interpretations, we won't have much wetland left in this city. And will such interpretations then give license to completely destroy what remains of a wetland? This coastal town, directly affected by climate, excuse me, climate change, can no longer afford to do that. My last concern, under Section Roman numeral 7, Conservation Goals, etc. While Policy 117 has been reinstated, Policy 116 remains stricken from this section, and that reads, "All lands proposed for development identified in Figure 19 shall be evaluated in accordance with Section Roman numeral 7, Paragraph H, Environmental Protection and Urban Infill Designations. If the section and/or paragraph in the title have changed, insert the changes, but keep the protective wording that precedes." I want to thank you for your energy that you expend caring for this terrific city. Please take all the time you need, we all know the state and county departments routinely grant time extensions, and look at all the recommended changes in even greater detail than you have already. Now realizing the extent of climate change's impact on coastal cities, you know I'm not exaggerating when I say to you the future existence of this city relies upon you doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Do we have any other public comment? Here none? Heather?
The staff's responses to those comments are in your backup, those were, he also emailed out to you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commission comment?
Yes, thank you Mark, could you explain the conversation that you had yesterday about how some, some things were, were doing separately and for, and then for why, please?
Yes, there's the great, a great deal of this, you know, we have, we have a deadline we have to get done by. We know there's these controversial sections in here, that's why we took it out and wanted to get done. As you say, we've heard some other changes, but, you know, we don't agree with them and think this should be passed as is, but we will be coming back to you because there's other elements of what we took out that this board has to really address, but where you should properly address it is, again, a lot of this stuff should have been done first reading, as you know, all this, all this came up at the end of the second reading on our deadline, so we will be coming back to you. There are other elements that we took out that we need to address, because while some people think they affect one project and stuff, they're gonna affect many projects that are here. So, we're giving you what we need, we, we've taken the stuff that's controversial, we've gone as far as we can, we don't agree with any additional changes to get this done, and then we need to address, because this board is gonna have to make a decision on something that'll affect a lot of projects throughout town, and you're gonna have to make a decision, so, so the portions take out are gonna be brought back to you, but they'll be brought back to you with a lot of explanation, a lot of thing, and a lot of chance for discussing public hearing, and that's gonna take some time to do, we can't just do that and change that a month ago. We need some time so the board can get all the information, get the information for both sides of the issue, and make the informed decision. We can't, you know, we can't go because of one project a lot of people want, you know, we can't affect other projects that are gonna be good for the city, and there's decisions gotta be made, but it can't be made in a short amount of time to get this through, so, we're passing this with those items out, and we'll be coming back so this board can address them with all the information they need to make a decision.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Licorice, also like to point out that the ordinance that we have front of us has been revised, and many changes have been made as well, and we took into the consideration all the recommendations from the public.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I've got a comment, I just want to support what Mark said, and thank you for the willingness to look at this as a full picture, and want to come back and look at this again in some of the areas that need to be addressed. I did talk to Heather about this, thank you for your time, and explaining this in more detail. I do think it would be a good idea to look at this and find an appropriate measure to potentially evaluate, application by application, instead of just a map that we referenced now, and I think it's Figure 19. And we look at each individual case as an individual case, instead of referencing a map that was done many years ago that might not be accurate to today's standard, so, I would recommend that the staff look into something along those lines as well.
Okay. Any other comment?
Yeah, thank you for going back and looking at it and listening to our citizens, and I know there's still some concerns, and I know that we have to be consistent with the states on, on some of this, on the comp plan, but I support what you said, Mark, about coming back and revisiting this, so, but thank you Heather for all your work, and for me, talking to me forever. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is a very critical element that we have to make sure everything's doing. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
In roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kika?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number 10, this is the ordinance 2018-15, The Application 1872, The Wireless Communications Tar Moreatorium, this is the first reading, and the city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2018-15, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Extending the Established Temporary Moratorium on the Submission and Processing of Any Application and Issuance of Any Permit for Location of Any Wireless Communication Facilities, Towers, or Antennas in the City's Right-of-Way for an Additional Period of 120 Days, Providing for Conflicts of Severability, Construction, and Publication, and Providing for an Effective Date. This is, the second reading will be July 10, 2018, and it was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June 29, 2018.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is actually just a request to extend the existing moratorium before it expires, simply because we're still in the process of drafting your regulations that are going to go into place to protect areas of the city that are, that are sensitive to having these type of telecommunications in the right-of-way, more specific, your historic areas. So as a result, we're hoping to go to hearing in the, in the mid-summertime, but again, we're working with our city attorney's office to make sure that we can get the regulations in place that makes sense for this community to protect their, the historic resources that we do have. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
No, I just want to comment that we need to make sure those G5 antennas will not be installed on the main street on Tarpon Avenue and Pinellas Avenue, it's pretty ugly, so, we need to make sure of that. Any commission comment?
I've got a question. You brought up aesthetics, or aesthetics, so, we have a cell phone tower right out off Gulf Road that is a flagpole?
It's not the same.
I understand that, but it, it's not a traditional cell phone tower, right, it's a flagpole, so is there something, as a measure of Tarpon Springs, you said these antennas aren't appeasing to the eye basically, right?
Yeah.
So is there a requirement that we could look at to make them appeasing to the eye, or that look somewhat blend in to the area? I'm not sure what that would be. So if we're looking at putting a memorandum, or a hold on this for now, should we look at putting separate design criterias, I suppose, to these antennas, once they are allowed to come into Tarpon Springs and, before we start having these ugly antennas show up in all of our neighborhoods? I don't know if that's something that we're interested in talking about as well.
Well, being that this is a new technology, you really don't have that many options to get the shape of the antenna, and because the technology you need to have, does not penetrate the walls and stuff, so you need to have small antennas in close distance.
But it's, it's a new technology that's, and I know you've got a lot of history in telecom, it's a new technology that we don't have currently in our town, so if we set a standard, then it could be what we allow, and it's what the precedent is, right?
Yeah, that's why Heather is asking for the extension to, take a look at all this stuff.
Yeah, where, where we, that's one of the things that we want to talk, we want to talk to the attorney about is our ability with the language that was written at, at the, in the state law and the state statute of stealth towers, you know, stealth towers different now when you're talking about, the technology is much smaller than it used to be, I mean, we had a mega technology that's now being miniaturized, so the impact to your daily life as a pedestrian is very different with that experience than, you know, the experience that you currently have with cell towers. So, we're gonna see if we can get some samples from, from some of the telecom folks of what they're proposing for those towers, so we can put, include that in the backup, so people can understand why, why the concern is there.
Yeah.
And, and if there's something that we can do to kind of mask that technology, we're gonna certainly look at that.
Put it in a light pole or something, you know, I mean, it's-
That's one of the things.
And, and that's one of the, the options, I mean, you know, especially in our historic downtown, we want to see something that's different, that's like that, because if you're gonna have something masking in a, in a light pole is, is a great option, because it doesn't give you the same view, visual cueing, and there's other things that you, that you can put in that same light pole technology. This is like one piece of a bigger technology that's gonna be coming forward into cities, so, we need to get smart about how we deal with this.
Yeah, thank you.
Good questions though, thank you. Any other question? Are there any public comment? Yes, sir. Please come to the, go to the podium stage, you name your address, please.
Ed Bard, Commander of the American Legion. The post, the tower that he was talking about on Gulf Road, are you saying it's not a tower? Is that, what is that exactly that's there on that property where the fire department is?
That is a tower, but I-
That is a tower?
It's a different technology we're talking about.
Okay, it's still a tower that we rent, we receive money from?
Yeah.
You tell me how much we receive, Your Honor?
That's not the item we're discussing.
That's not what we're talking about now.
Okay, I just feel I asked that question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments on this particular item? Here none? I will entertain a motion.
Second.
In roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kika?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you. We are now going to the item number 11, which is the ordinance 2018-14, Amendment to Special Slow, Minimal Wake Zone, and Special Idle Speed, No Wake Zone on the Anclaw River, this is the second reading. City Attorney, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2018-14, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending Chapter 5, Boat, Stocks, and Waterways, Article 1 in general, by adding a new section entitled Section 5-7.1, Establishment of Special Slow Speed, Minimal Wake Zones, and Special Idle Speed, No Wake Zones on the Anclaw River, Provided for Appeal of Ordances or Parts of Ordances in Conflict Herewith, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and Providing for the Effective Date of this ordinance. It has been published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 25th and June 1st, 2018.
Thank you. Staff report, Major.
Major Young, Tarpon Springs Police Department, nothing new to add to the ordinance. Again, once, if, if approved tonight on the second reading, I'll work with Mr. Perez from the city attorney's office on drafting the final application, which would be submitted to the state. Once that's approved through them and they issue us a permit number, then we'll work with Public Works, Tom Funtz's people on getting the pilings and signage installed.
Once again, thank you for your work.
Thank you, thank you to Mr. Perez for all his help too.
Mostly Major Young.
Any commission comment? Any public comments on this item? Here none? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kika?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes, thank you. The item number 2 has been deferred, so we go to 13, which is the appointment to the Heritage Preservation Board, this is straightforward. We need to fill the unexpired position, term vacated by Mr. Bolton, and we have one applicant. I need a motion? Or discussion rather?
Well, I mean, there's not much discussion, is there? So, I wouldn't, if you accept a motion, I motion to appoint Patricia Cornell to fill the unexpired term of David Bolton.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other commission comments? Any public comments on this item? Here none? In roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kika?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the regularization meeting, and it adjourns at 7:16 PM, and we are now going to the CRA meeting. I now call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 26, 2018, at 7:17 PM. In roll call please.
Chair Alahuzis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banther?
Yes, oh here, sorry.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kika?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
First item on the agenda is the sale of a CRA-owned property at 325 East Lemon Street, this is a Silver King Brewing Company. Staff report.
Thank you, Karen Lemons, Economic Development Manager. This item is the sale of 325 East Lemon Street, currently owned by the CRA, and is being leased to Silver King Brewing Company. And tonight we're seeking approval of the sale to Silver King pursuant to the commercial lease and option to purchase agreement that was signed with them back in 2012. They've had the lease, again, since 2012, it's a five-year lease with a five-year renewal, and included in that is the option to purchase. The option to purchase outlines the sale price, which is based on the year that the sale takes place. And in December of last year, if you recall, the CRA approved the extension of the lease until August 1st of 2018, and then in January of this year, Silver King exercised their option to purchase by giving us their notice of intent to buy the building. So based on the terms in that option to purchase, the purchase price is $133,152 if it's purchased before July 1 of 2018, and we have a closing date set for Thursday, the 28th. So I'd just like to add to this, this was one of the very first projects when I started with the city in January of 2012, and I remember driving Brett Gamrot- And, um, I remember driving Brett Gamrot, meeting him and driving him around the city, trying to find, uh, a space for the brewery and it was the first craft brewery to be located within the city. And, um, at the time it was, um, like I say, I was new, looking at buildings and finally the light came on that that fire police station is the perfect spot for it. And if you look back, that was six and a half years ago. So you look at that building now, we have a successful craft brewery there, that whole, that whole area has been reimagined and reinvented. The parking lot will be opening in a few months, so, um, very excited about this project. And I want to thank the support of the CRA and the BOC for providing, um, the support through the incentives that the CRA offers to be able to do projects like this. And I also want to, um, thank Silver King. I see John is here. They've been a great tenant through the years. They've been a very great addition to the downtown, have been very successful. I believe their beers are now in over 60 different restaurants and bars through the Tampa Bay region. They're very active in the merchants association and we're very pleased, um, what they've done to the building and we look forward to working with them and supporting them, uh, moving forward. So with that, um, staff recommends approval of the sale of, of the building pursuant to that commercial option of lease to purchase agreement.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I like to comment that, uh, this is exactly what the CRA should do to create opportunities for business to grow and that's exactly what you did. Thank you. Any, uh, commission comment? Commission Kikta?
Thank you. And Karen, thank you for, um, for your work on this. I know this was, this was your first project, I believe, and, um, I want to congratulate you. You're buying a piece of history here in Tarpon Springs. That building goes back a long way and, um, it's, it served a great purpose back then, but I, 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 I'm just so thrilled to see that, you know, we didn't have to tear it down or anything and somebody's come in and invested into our community, invested in our community and, um, and now purchasing it, like I said, you're purchasing a piece of history and I want to thank you so much. Do a great job there. Really have revitalized that area, uh, quite a bit and, and bringing more people into the community. So, um, thank you very much and the best of luck to you.
Other comment?
Yes, uh, of course I agree with everything, uh, Susan said. I remember that project and I remember going there, uh, right at the beginning and going, oh, how is this going to become a brewery? I mean, there was a lot to do and, uh, I want to thank Brad too, but, uh, yes, a great job. You guys work with community and, and are involved and, and have done so much for the community and, and thank you Karen for seeing that and, uh, imagining what it would be and, and working on it so hard. So appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't drink beer, but it's a really fun place to go and it's a great, uh, asset for Tarpon Springs. So thank you for being here. I'm glad we could take the next step, next step forward for you being here for many, many more years. Uh, exciting to see that this is going on and, uh, good to hear all the successful stories of being in different restaurants. I'm in favor of this.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. I, I want to echo all the comments and thank Karen for her vision and thank you all Silver King for investing in our community and I hope that, um, I believe we are starting to match Dunedin in their breweries and that type of culture and I hope to, I hope to surpass them as we have in many things and that, and that, and that, and that areas. So, so, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We are now going to the public comments. Do you want to say something?
John Troyer, Silver King Brewing Company. I just really want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. Um, we're glad you're pleased with what we did. You know, a lot of people have helped, you know, local community members, everybody was always willing to step up, volunteer, help us get started. So thank you very much.
And thank you for preserving the old jail.
Yeah, yeah. It's not, it's going to stay pretty much the way it is.
Historic place, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? We hear none. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
And roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banther?
Yeah.
Sheriff Alahuzus.
Yes. Item number two is the award file number 180138 CCM, U.S. Communities Traffic Control Products and Related Products and Solutions Contract Number 2013 dash 100 for decorative sign posts. Yeah.
Thank you, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. Um, this is the, this item is a purchase of materials that are needed to install decorative street signs within the CRA portion of the historic district. Over the past several months, there have been discussions both at our HPB meetings and the BOC about overall beautification. And one of those has been, um, upgrading our signage. At HPB, we looked at doing something that would give a sense of place to the historic district and let people know that they're entering a historic district. Sometimes we have applicants who say that they don't know that they're in a historic district and they, they come forward for applications and weren't, didn't know that they had to do renovations. So this will not only help beautify the area, but will also give that sense of place when people get into the historic district, they'll know it looks different because they'll see these signs. We're doing this project in two phases because we want to do the overall historic district, both the national and the local. You've got maps there that show that. Um, this first portion is just, um, the CRA portion of the historic district. So there are about 35 intersections that are in the CRA and also in the historic district. So tonight, this purchase will provide the materials needed for those signs. Once those are installed, then we'll go and use general funds for the remaining 40 intersections that are in the historic district, but outside of the CRA boundaries. There was a prototype that the public work staff, uh, constructed and, um, put out on Beakman and South Spring, right at the Heritage Center there. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look at it, but that's what the, the signs will look like. And then there's pictures in here so that you can, you can see them as well. So we're excited about the project and we think it's going to really enhance the historic district.
Yeah, thank you. I had the opportunity to go by and see that. Looked nice. Now, as Mark, uh, our city manager, Licorice, to tell us about the signs we'll be making house. We actually going to save quite a bit of money doing that, right?
Yes, and that's why, that's one of the other reasons why we're doing it in phases because we're going to be doing it in-house with personnel. So that's why we'll, we'll do this phase and get those put up and then we plan on duplicating that and doing it for the rest of the historical district.
Yeah, during the, uh, students academy session, I had the opportunity to, uh, watch the employee making the signs. He's really good. Thank you. Yeah. Any, uh, commission comments? I'd like to start with, uh, Commissioner Carr and I want to thank you for bringing it forward about all the signs here to beautify the city. We'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I know other commissioners expressed some similar items, so I'm happy to bring all the board together and talk about this inner work session. And so thank you all for your willingness to wanting to, to move forward on a lot of these projects. I just had a couple of questions. I, I sent Karen a quick note earlier. We do have a lot more signs other than stop signs in the historic district, uh, like no parking on this side of the street, uh, children at play, speed limit signs. Uh, I do believe these are signs that we want to look at as a whole and probably upgrade those poles as well. Uh, they don't have to be as fancy as these, uh, stop signs, but it is something that is, would be nice to see the same type of pole throughout the district, um, overall. And then I know you mentioned that you're going to come back for general funds to be approved for the rest, remainder of the district. Uh, I did mention in our workshop meeting, it'd be good to see, uh, some of the higher traffic, um, intersections in other parts of town. If it's Martin Luther King in Safford, um, if it's, um, down by the Sponge Docks or if it's out by the beach where we have some of these highly traffic four-way stops where we can do something along these lines too. I'm not saying do the whole city in these signs, but focus on some of these high traffic areas just to make it a prettier, um, eye catching, right? Uh, it shows that, it shows that Tarpon Springs is a, has character, has history, I think a lot of those lines. Um, I do believe like Bay Shore Heights is one of those places that have installed like a nicer stop sign poles. Uh, it might be advantageous for the board to look at an opportunity to put in our guidelines when we have a redevelopment or a new development. If it's like a redesigned Publix or redesigned shopping center that we have certain requirements for the type of signs that they use for the traffic signs. Uh, again, this is paying attention to details, uh, during our development process and there are small things that will set Tarpon Springs apart from other communities. And then when you come into Tarpon Springs, you're like, we're in a different community. So, uh, I'm totally in favor of this. I, I love this idea. Thank you for moving forward with this from the staff perspective and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber? Got it, please.
No, no comments.
No. Let me check that.
Thank you. And, um, Ms. Lemmons, thank you for bringing this back to us. It's going to, it will be nice to have some conformity throughout the historic district and I think it will just basically clean it up, you know? So I think this is a great idea and I, I totally support it. And, um, I look forward to the entire project being completed as soon as possible. I had no idea these were bringing made in-house and I think that's, that's fantastic. Fantastic. So, you know, I do support this project. Like I said, it'll, it'll, um, um, just have conformity throughout the historic district and, and this be a clean, clean look. And I, I have to agree with Commissioner Carr, um, some of these new community, the communities that come in, I believe it is Bay Shore Heights. I drove through there when they were building and they have similar poles to this and the lighting is so much nicer and, and the, and the street signs all conform and, and it just, so maybe that's something we should look at when new communities come in, um, have some, some sort of, um, standard lighting fixtures that we require or something. So we have, so it does look, you know, community looks nice. So it's just something we really should think about. But again, thank everybody, I want to thank everybody for this. It's, um, I'm looking forward to seeing, seeing these go up.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? entertain a motion?
Question to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzus.
Yes. Well, that concludes the CRA agenda and we go to staff comments, police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. No, no comments, thank you.
City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, no comments.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Pleasure as always, thank you.
Deborah City Clerk?
No comments.
Mr. Licorice?
No, sir.
Adam E. To.
That's okay.
Vice Mayor Banther?
I think really I have PST tomorrow, so it's always nice to end at a decent hour on Tuesday nights, so I'll report back when anything interesting happens.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
No comments.
Commissioner Kikta?
No comments.
Commissioner Carr?
I've got a question, Mark. If you could, um, what's the timeline for the old Sun Bay property with looking at what the next steps are when they're going to come back before the CRA to decide or look at, are we, what's going to see, what we're going to see in the building? I mean, when, are you coming back to us or are we just moving forward with some of the stuff that's been discussed in past meetings?
Yeah, we're, we're moving forward with some of the simple, getting that building ready to go in. As you can see, it's coming a long way. We'll probably bring you back some ideas of some overall, just general beautification. We've still, I, I've talked to, we've, we were trying to talk to everybody we can to get different ideas and there's a lot of different ideas. So we're going to try to come together and look at, you know, what type of plantings,